Next, we have the board of presidents. I'm sorry, I'm going to pull the personnel report out. We've got some students here that gave a presentation regarding the current address of what they're down now. We'll get to that point. So we're going to be attending to be just through talking about it in work sessions. The board of presidents for February 11th regular session, February 25th executive session, March 4th executive session, March 5th executive session, and March 7th executive session. Probable claims were federal claims February 14th and February 20th. And accounts payable claims. Uh, personnel report. Period there. Certified staff leave of absence, just to connect with medical leave. Mike Drew retired, did valley retirement, and Susan Sutino retirement. Classified staff medically absent for heat and injury. Recommendation for Lisa Wrens, recommendation of Dan Gibbs. Cafeteria. DCA Spencer here, and this is recommendation Spencer here as assistant soccer coach by high school. Dave Maddick assistant track coach to the middle school. Adam Armstrong head boys track coach to the middle school. And recommendation for Adam Armstrong, Danny Basil coach high school, and Michael Handley assistant track coach at high school. The second two items.
Third.
Second hall, there say hi.
Hi. And Dan is one of the most speaker of the government's values, so you have a number of years here at the city. So all right. Uh, so they are staff members at high school. Never like seeing people that just retire or go to one and uh, they're specialized in constitution to the school, to the community, and we're just along in the camera line, so. And if their services is good, that's all. Sorry. I got, I got. Yeah, we've got a three, three person schedule here. Uh, and just kind of represent that and we'll talk to them more down. The agenda of that word was by virus, uh, revealing that right now whole person schedule. That plan, uh, it's a good out state, uh, very close to the monitoring situation. Education, public health, national department, uh, agency engagement, state agencies, and so on. For the situation, right now they're being planned and they'll arrive to us. Okay, so that, that had our chief approval. We've uh, gave approval on this, the DCA on, uh, the U.S. Representative here for the National Art Honors Society to establish for their kind of the Chicago state of very important world, so. Okay, let's introduce yourself and set up for the mic so we can record it.
Alrighty, good evening. I'm Keaton Woods, the president of National Art Honors Society. Um, so we do do a yearly trip to Chicago, visit the art museum, um, and then sightsee, um, around the city. Tipton people don't get that opportunity very often to go to big cities, so, and we think that's pretty cool to do that. Um, so along that, it is actually youth art month this month, so we're going to give you some facts and what we do to celebrate art within the school and in the community. Um, so youth art month was created to bring awareness to, um, art in your everyday lives and in the school curriculum as well. So from the clothes you wear, um, to the buildings we live in and work in, um, without these, um, our lives would be pretty boring and dull without art. I don't, couldn't imagine what life would be like without art, um. So I'm going to pass it over to the vice president, and she's going to explain some of the events we do during this month for art, um, and how we incorporate it into the high school for the students.
Hello, I'm Adam Kane, and I'm the vice president. The Tipton High School National Art Honors Society strives to promote an awareness and appreciation of art in our school community. Tractor activities include setting up and maintaining the front display case, creating murals to add to the educational environment of the school, creating a yearly calendar with student artwork, participating in the Friends of the Library Christmas basket program, helping to supervise the art tent at the work festival, collecting for the food pantry twice a year, helping to raise funds for the community-wide Thanksgiving dinner, helping to prepare and set up for the THS art exhibit each spring at the Tipton County Public Library, participating in fundraisers for the National Art Honors Society Scholarship and Activities Fund, as well as attending meetings and going on field trips to various museums. Special activities that we conduct for youth art month include the colors in the jar contest, art quotes in the daily announcements, and a traveling art exhibit featuring a famous artist that is displayed in the Tipton High School cafeteria per week for the whole student population to enjoy. One of the highlights of youth art month is our spring induction of new members. We extend an invitation to all of you to attend this year's ceremony on Thursday, March the 19th at 6:00 PM in the Tipton High School cafeteria. Thank you for your support of our at Tipton High School.
Thank you.
You mentioned the, uh, some participation in murals, is that correct? Do you guys, if you guys had a interest, may participate with the Tipton major system as a mural subgrain? All of the fun that, um, you think it creates a society running a fortress, having a celebration, any of that in common activity?
Yeah, I think, yeah, we'll talk to Mrs. Ferguson, but I think that would certainly be something that we would look into. I know we've done like murals in the hospital for their tiles, um, and then down like the band and art hallway, we've also done decorated tiles, so I think that's something that.
Would I bet that?
Okay, do you know when the art show is supposed to be, uh, public library?
Um, it's coming up pretty soon because you're looking at a few judges.
I know.
Um, but so it is coming up soon, I think, within the next week.
Okay, thank you. Be looking for that.
Thank you.
Yeah, wait, break your, wait, that's.
Food work is really amazing, uh, so. The product video is, uh, very, so, very worth it. Right, thank you guys. Thank you.
So the ad here, the product video, the third, thirty, hundred twenty-seven, twenty-nine, uh, and on, on the side, that way. And, um, this year, uh, the April, uh, fifth of Washington, December seventh, uh, one, uh, twenty-one. There should go later, on April, this year, uh, they're approved, and they got more laundry, uh, and they're sitting on the, uh, laundry. It's approved for those three years.
The motions. I have second.
Second.
And then upon, and travel research. One day, remember, you have a lot of tracks, so these three, say, uh, say hi.
Hi. Okay, you have a part of reports from solid education, service, and all the.
Foundation help, we'll pay for it to get it initially put in place, so, uh, it's been a good, good help. Still gotta get everybody else to.
And what that is, is a hopeful ask, that if there's an intruder or. Serious or, or nothing, we, we, anybody, uh, do a couple things. Uh, that work goes down immediately, so really, to call certain county, all of those to then, by my rated as one of the original, figuring right here. They have a similar half of their phones. That's responsible, uh, so a lot of like, they need to do this, I have to do it right now. So that's the, the one thing, other things, uh, we use that call as teacher assistant. There's a county office, a ton of that nature, but I think, and there's one teacher, that all well said, uh, there's some, uh, that's entering. So you get a teacher assistant, all of a sudden, we got everybody, uh, that had that, uh, so. But now, by the time they're in, we're saying, yeah, it, the agents, they're getting contact, so, not going with this. Uh, the, 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 so, and, yeah, there's something, uh, the doctor, I'm kind of turned by the, uh, the, the security grant, uh, everybody in the line voted. Didn't happen, uh, there wasn't, uh, collective effort here in Tipton County, which we, very simple, Tipton, uh, county sheriffs, we had to sign off on it. And it was really full of fire, uh, so it's, we're, we're, we're.
Have a test then, and then this, or the law, or.
Yes, they, they, nine one one, they go to nine one one. Uh, they go to Tipton nine one one right, right there, but the, the really good thing about this program is it's geofenced on the whole property. So anywhere in the property, if you're sitting right here and you have an emergency, it's going to direct to this location. So that, that's the best part of the, the app, but it does work at nine one one. We haven't hit the big button, but we have hit the nine one one button.
Okay, and, uh, the local administrators of buildings have some, well, probably got access to this, uh, while, like, the citizens, like, classes, where they have the ability to access it, and they are, we are, that they don't, yes, appropriately. And then, additional to that, so the revenue, to identify administrative campaign, make teachers, staff members to down with. It seemed like a huge impediment to the citizens of the act, uh, might get forced to staff down with, if I might, uh, uh, so what, what are you doing, uh, back?
Any question? Yeah, yeah, because of your personal phone, so.
I, I still.
And you can't say enough to example, your personal phone, but, um, we're just, we're purring, uh, people to do it. A lot of feedback or quick back to get is, and allow our kids to use our phones. And I, um, computer, uh, technically, uh, never, uh, never made, uh, in that, uh, so, and you can put it within a folder or something, you gotta, so it's not really available on your phone, so.
How I just.
So we're just trying to encourage staff members to, to put on phones, uh, to, our school's going to help them, uh, if they're up here, I'm trying on the ground to get help.
Is there anything else the board can do, or just have to take this as a game?
Uh, it's okay, but, uh, but on the phone, we're, we're, a thirty percent of our staff has it. Little bit on, so, I just, uh, getting personal, hopefully they can call the staff, or get into, uh, get it, really add to it.
I totally understand that. My, your father, he can't even have, that's what I'm asking. I think it's very.
Did you start your monetary? I'm sorry, monetary cycling to the staff phone? I'm not suggesting that, because you're talking about it, probably.
I, I think you would see an increase.
Slippery slope here, um, the concern is, you read this, uh, a new article that has a staff number attached to it, try to keep it. So that, that's the concern.
I think you heard from, uh, administrators and talking that, that, that it can have a user friendly and, and it's not going to go off as easily as you think it will. I think it will, so, uh, we're definitely going to have to make a campaign for that, uh, because it is scary. We're sitting in an administrative meeting, and, you know, I'm hitting the nine one one button, and we're like, everybody's scared, but what's going to happen? Well, hit the button, see what happens, and nothing happened other than nine one one said, how is it, how can I help you? And I said, no emergency, we, we just, uh, are testing it. So, uh, I think the fear of the button is the big, big problem right now.
So you have a communication strategy or campaign you think you're going to launch to help with the doctrine?
I'm sure that'll be on my, at the end of this week, in that, I mean, I, I'm being serious, that's something I had, I should work on this.
Okay.
Now, what? Were there any spring break building projects, uh, operations building projects, uh, cleaning, identifying? So, maybe outside, or, 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 or. Or share that with, uh, the, 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 the.
There's some outbuildings, uh, in terms of, uh, so. Ceiling tiles and different projects that we need to get, uh, as before, but mainly big time cleaning and, uh, stair lighting. Our custodians have done a good job, and they're going into rooms, and that's one of the big concerns, they're going into rooms, and it's not even handled, and they're, they're doing doors and, and tables better than they ever have, uh, but that's going to be, we're going to have to keep hitting it very hard over spring break, because, um, we don't want anything bad to happen.
I have a question for food service section, uh, the breakfast in classroom that appears in the lane, I'm just curious, are any communications already in this, and, uh, what's the initiative behind that, uh, and then also where have you tested at, uh, with the typical, with the demoing, uh, this next classroom, uh, it's back in person. We got it, and finally had this stuff delivered, and then we had that issue, um, and she seems, uh, basically, we, we built the program around that, we, so we're just kind of waiting for it to come back. And started up again, she expressed that she really wants to do it, she's pretty well invested in, so we think it's, it's better just to wait for that. Uh, we have all the items that we need to roll out. Um, were you asking, like, what's the reasoning behind it, what's the goal? Uh, increasing meal sales, um, you, you find out that, uh, breakfast in the classroom across the nation, uh, seems to increase, sales by sometimes up to thirty something percent. Uh, and, and we have some, uh, students that are not joining us for breakfast that are free, and that's kind of a no brainer, you know? Uh, and obviously, if it's free, they should be able to include the fact that we have kind of a backpack sack type situation where it's, it's sheltered, they can take it, but in their backpack, you can take it home. Uh, gift to friends in, in, uh, snacks when they get out of school. So generally, it's, it's well received, and you have a lot of students that will say that they, you know, the bus at seven fifty-five, and don't want to be the last one in the classroom and things like that. So, um, we've been working with, uh, Mrs. Keaton, Mr. Leach, uh, and about four different teachers, and kind of trying to feel out the program, all the different options, because there's like seventeen ways to implement it, uh, but it's all based on welcoming the teachers' lives, and that's catastrophic, yeah, so, um, and like, so, so as soon as we can, this best, this, that gets back on their feet, um, we're going to get that off the ground. You know, demo it for her for about a week, maybe two weeks, and then we've got, uh, three hundred teachers interested, and we'll expand those through, and then take all of our results back to, to keep them,
Our revenue is reduced because of our.
I think it's time to move it out. Somebody's been working on that. Yeah, it's kind of weird to see a lot of it is. There are a bit of reasons. So a lot of what I don't get a lot. Still don't change. Change anything. Easy as a layup. For the house. I'm caring moving. House.
Have any interaction or should we have any interaction with that? If the if the beginning is breaking down, it's possible the moment to change. Do you still have a participation opportunity? I don't know, I'm not suggesting that. Exploring. And is school somehow being engaged in that? Trying to reduce the issue within the whole. And it's taken a bit back to our school teams to figure out. So you don't get a community in reality and several of them. So we got some participation and competitions. Part of the county. City, city, county, city, you're trying to figure out. Of the student.
And we work to help those students.
Sure.
Sure. We got a lot of.
What are your barriers there?
And we have a lot of. We have a lot of. That's a that's a long. Yeah, I think it adds up here.
I can just tell you, it's a double as long as you're cutting out of the high school or middle school. You know, if it's high school, then why are they even about on my school? You know, we're not the offering.
Well, we do have a lot of like. Sort of sort of an end of the right now or no straight. It's more like a small area to the table. Uh, what name is it for? So that needs changing for like. So that's something we're looking at. Offer them like. Yeah, because we have uh challenging for the kids to believe in after this. We got we got computer guys, so that's what others can act to. There is some options for that. Uh, probably more than one.
Well, you can just look at the numbers and figures like. Those high school students, I don't see why we couldn't hire a part-time person to set up. Those students don't have a classroom and I mean, you're retaining those students. They're still going to get into high school. They'll get an education here, they'll still see us set around.
That was the problem behind uh one of that business. If you're going to call it possible, we have a couple of years. So if I choose to do that, then I was trying to say, oh, yeah, online academy or something else. Just maybe I'm trying to come here in the fall. That added option to it. Over that. And that on that. To your case, you.
I just think something you look at in house, to care for.
And and it was all part of the. Okay, I don't know. Uh, my question. All right, uh, just an update on uh. Hold it at nineteen. Uh, we sent two communications out there, our app or parents or. As they mentioned for last week or week four. We have all our pandemic plans from two thousand nine on the shelf. Start putting them on. They did, we made sure that apparently that day. Uh, so we have that plan. That uh very much place where there's some days. Uh, so it's not nothing. This is not new for schools to prepare. Instead of it, it is more widespread than what we got with half two thousand nineteen. Uh, since other schools uh getting communication, we're getting feedback with resources. Thank you to this office. Uh, would be as well as the state office, the parent organizations. Uh, there's usually is a communication with the health department. There's resources from the state, the N Department of Health. And a lot of other resources CD. Uh, working and working out based on testing. Files of this resource were apparent uh to help the city. Feel like we're good. I can play. You're good. Uh, on the lead. CDC and Department of Health. As far as they own your kid, all your hands. Looking out for the season, all best practices during flu season. Soon you got tired, posted in the restaurants. But I can't get by playing on the stupid color. But I'm sure it's all your hands. Uh, division is all. Uh, we're cutting that, we're aware of it. We're cutting that. Here with the issue that that course of our areas. We're out on the beach tomorrow with the uh the dependent health department. That's the long thing date. The off. Uh, along along the roots. And sort of working together uh.
Appreciate your reference.
Appreciate your reference. Just communication with everyone.
Is there is there one of the.
We need to form the the. Autocan in the two or two. This time last year, like we're we're in grade. We we got hit with a third half damage to our engine.
Is there. Is there one agency that we would take the most traction from as far as imposing schools down?
Uh, we've been working closely with county. County health departments.
Different county, but the county.
As I have the CHC and uh, you know, suit and versions. And that's where we did it for that part.
Thank you for being my people. Studying their classes and quotes, there's a lot of question, right? So. They have a little bit of the advantage in doing things online.
Right, I'm proud of uh three very uh two's. One to. A lot of good. They're they're better equipped than one of five.
Any other question, Elena? Uh, I just think it'd be important to keep the board informed daily, weekly. I mean, especially the big decision on the counting down. I mean, there's gonna be thousands of opinions on what we should do or not do or should down, not in. Any confirmed plan on the counting down. We need to hate. Oh, okay.
Uh, the other thing I brought it for you. Uh, thank you for working with us as a part of our consulting with the education. And uh, share with you uh. A little background on what you've been doing. I did it late. You've been working more closely with the federal, with the management. And it's on the regions. Working with federal, some better than the public story. Uh, so. This morning. Uh, she also is making contact with the community. Chamber of Commerce, uh, Farming Business Interview. They make a lot of connections to the offices and the education. Uh, she's also writing you the three-year plan. Uh, for the data and brand. Although three goals are pretty positive emotion. Uh, again, do it quite generally. Very sensitive to her in the age of eight. Uh, they're at a tall stage, so. Not sustainable office, just gonna get a lot of the seeds. Other articles you've seen in previous management, particularly articles that have those gaps. Uh, she did it as well. And she worked hard for it and she's also working on uh promotion material.
This is not going to be shared internally. This is not going to be shared internally, externally. Just within the party that are involved in that.
It's not going to be.
Start figuring out.
Okay, uh, yes. She is able to get that through the original. Get a share field. We've got as well a voice to talk. Your background.
This is still working hard in their hands.
Sure.
So when it's done, does that get published? And then the timeline is a follow-up too. There's a few of them that had timelines on. We're all going to have some type of timings. Dead on to them. Please decide. Twenty point two.
Any other questions? You have a book?
Next is whole business and for a development consideration to approve. The greatest work policy in the second reading. The work policy was uh last month on the first reading. Any of these are based on the state laws. Uh, there are three fine certified machine or little policies. And then now for the second reading. It has probably changed this. What we're trying to. What it is to allow. From supply over our own leased contracted. Uh, facilities and property with permission of the superintendent. And the other one was a work change that he had changed for.
May I? I need to challenge. Those motions are approved. And it's. With the issue.
Second.
Second.
Motion is second in favor of approving work policy. And changes, all say aye.
Aye.
Next, on the government business and that is a consideration to approve. Uh, pursuing purchase of installation of three rooms. Also, purchasing three houses of lots of twenty-five hundred dollars. Creating a city, we need to have a concrete add or foundation as well as adding. Two hundred water, like there's some gas. Actual cost of installation, not yet been established. That is estimated to be fifteen thousand dollars in estimate. Initial plans are to locate three houses on the east side of the building south of the high school swimming pool. This will need to be checked future. This location based on the total available. They're in a corporation, stable for installation of three houses on property. And we'll be checking the plan before the installation.
Second.
Second, all take a aye. Next is consideration to approve lease with Apple for a free laptop computer. And they're like, did it lease with Apple for two hundred and sixty-five MacBook Air laptops and fruit. This is a four-year lease that you're going to pass. So the loan basis is one hundred eighty thousand, one hundred fifty dollars at point nine percent by. It's also reluctantly thirty-one thousand, five hundred thirty-five dollar discount from Apple. These due by soon, we can share these two thirty-nine six. It's involved this year. Police with Apple Incorporated was twenty forty-three, twenty-three mobile screen laptops.
I'll have you have to make motion only across March. We need these computers. I don't want to do this in March this year. We're gonna look at other providers. Let's do this in November. But I'll.
Second, all day for purchasing this game laptops. Say aye.
Aye.
Buzz. Next is consideration to approve lease with Apple Incorporated for staff laptop computer. Apple laptops currently used by our staff are being played. Their price is being purchased in twenty twelve and twenty fourteen. We have two options. The price is being purchased on a four-year lease. It was twelve years, same price, six four thousand, hundred, fourteen thousand, six hundred dollars. The price may be purchased outright at a cost of one hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars. Second, I'm purchasing a laptop from staff.
Motion. So. Second.
Which is second, all day for purchasing a aye.
Aye.
Buzz. Other guy. Next up is advisory committees. We're having a personal advisory committee next Monday. Uh, capable point of this is the advisory committee. And then the the so technology advisory committee. Back on rotation. Do personal advisory and this is the spirit of the line. And it's coming up as uh your house session is in twenty-first. Uh, maybe twenty-seventh, April third, district advisory committee with that. April fifteenth, uh, system academy and next working is April fourth. That's where he does the office for the meeting.
Three minutes, please, Rob Cochran.
Okay.
Laura Suton.
I wanted to publicly say thank you. I know she's here to uh, I don't know if you all saw the news story. Um, about the initiative to help the seniors that can't pay their book fees to walk across the stage. Uh, Linda Herden Shepherd, I believe, who started a fund. Couple of the local businesses have offered, I think, um. June Andy did a fundraiser for it. Uh, the coffee place did that kind of thing. My question, I guess, to you guys is. How does not letting these students walk across the stage pay the book fees off? Right, the current policy is if book fees aren't paid. Then these children can't walk across the stage at graduation. So my question is, how does not letting them walk across the stage pay off the book fees that are owed?
Now, hey, it would be the last. Prepare of the last piece of language to get the bugs for the tech redos.
Right, but it doesn't. I guess I'm coming from the perspective of, for lack of a better analogy. The punishment doesn't fit the crime, so to speak. I I I feel they're like two separate issues and they shouldn't be. You know, mixed together, so to speak. Because we have to collect the book fees because of, you know, money, right? Um, I guess just, for example, you know, I didn't go to school here, but the school I went to, the senior class did a ton. Of fundraising, you know, car washes just amongst themselves, really. I mean, it was kind of a project that the senior class did to support the senior. I don't think you put your like right there.
Might be the last one.
Yeah. So I just, I'm just asking. Why do we have that policy if it doesn't go towards paying the fees back and it shouldn't be kept separate? Because.
So I think if the word's open, there are other ways to get the fees paid. Uh, it's not. I think it's the opposite. We're trying to incentivize them to get them paid so they can. We're trying to punish.
But that's what's happening now. Because the student is being punished for whatever means their parents can't pay. It's to me a separate. You know, entity to itself. I just. I I just don't. I guess I don't support it, is what I'm trying to say in a roundabout kind of way. So I'm just asking why that we have to do it that way? And focus more on getting the fees because this is no way. Collects the fees. I just don't understand why we have it.
Okay. Great point. Thank you.
And this is Ted Perfect. I'm sorry. My daughter's in the sixth grade and I was very interested in this neighborhood. And I have a quick question for you. Um, and you're getting large class in the entire school corporation. Um, are all the teachers. Um, for everything? Okay, I'm sorry, I thought I could ask.
Kim Warner.
Hi. So I only speak every couple of months. And um, I know a lot of times, sharing teachers in the staff has come up. So I wanted to be proactive, so I put together a schedule with TC, our middle school or high school. And I color-coded where we could currently share, knowing that there may be some changes. Um, I do want to say that Brett Sanders has mentioned that he went to Frankton, but he needed to take a class at La Pell. And his D A year like biology two or something. And he said when they were on the exact same schedule, it wasn't good because he had to leave. Uh, Frankton fifteen minutes out of one period. Get to La Pell, take the class and then travel fifteen minutes back and he missed fifteen minutes of the other class. If we're just doing high school to middle school and we have our four or five minute passing period and both periods end at ten fifty-two. And I as a teacher or a student from one of the buildings has to switch and we have four minutes. Yeah, where we're going and ready for class. And then we have four minutes at the end to get back. It's really stressful, so I'm just gonna suggest that we look at staggering schedules. If we're gonna share just so that a teacher, say he's gonna go to Tri Central and teach, doesn't lose. Half of one period, half of another period, in the essence, we've lost three periods to teach one. I'll be sending that to you. I haven't, but I haven't sent it because I know we receive a superintendent search.
Welcome back, Adrian.
So I have a question. We've lost thirty-one kids on this EDM count. How many did we lose in the springtime or the first count?
Uh, I believe we're down like twenty.
So we're down fifty kids total? So we've talked about marketing for two, three years now. If we're losing fifty kids, are we gonna be cutting teachers now?
Yeah, we're we're looking at that possibility, yes.
So we just gave teachers raises, which we haven't paid for in eight, ten years and now we're gonna cut them. Can you tell me why?
Reductions in numbers, yes, we're we're taking a look at that, yes.
So was that not looked at before we gave the raises out?
Yes.
But we decided to give the raises anyways.
Right. That's that's what's needed, yes.
Okay, so. We're not doing very good business, consider. If we don't have the money to pay for, why are we? Is a question I have.
Okay, as far as the pay rates, we did put any money aside in the rainy day with. Intent of huge amount of pay rates is that's what we're doing at this point.
Okay, so the question on the board, would you support a teacher cut before a new superintendent comes in and looks at this?
No. I think you have to have an after when you skirt out.
Cut. All right, well, I just hope you consider if we don't need to lose any teachers. We've worked hard enough to pay them, so. Don't cut unless you have to.
This is my first.
Um, the only thing I had, based on what this week to talk about, talked about. And we are repeating for next year, I know actual passing standard base, standard base. Um, and it and it sounds like a great, great thing. Um, what is, I guess, between what she's gonna do next year, having possibly sixteen teachers? Doing it, what is the school corporation overall? What's the plan? If it goes well next year, are we going to expand it to the entire middle school? And then expand it to high school, elementary? How does that work? And I mean, how do how do all the buildings, I guess? Do that together?
My thinking would be taking the lead from them. They come back and they show success. They 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 prove model that it works, we're seeing better outcomes. Students to more prepared to identify mistakes and. You know, we've been off the conversation and success. Going out to another grade, another school. Uh, again, if you admire your school, if it goes through the same pilot program, if you teach involved pilot, if it works. Uh, I think it goes to that implementation.
Um, it's very important for the success of standards-based grading that it is not forced upon teachers. That um, teachers are um, taught and I and they understand fully the reasons why standard-based. Um, is the way that it is. So it would be very detrimental for me to say, well, it worked great with these six, all y'all are doing it. Um, it's not really not gonna help. Um, the rollout, it it wouldn't be very helpful for the students. So we want to make sure that the teachers that are implementing it are implementing it in a effective manner. Um, and then. But that's why I'm also looking at the grading practices of those teachers who are choosing to stay. In the points-based system, um, to make sure that their grading is. Equivalent to what's going on with the standards-based. So just to make sure that um. The grades mean what they mean.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
That was my only question about that. And I guess if you have an update as to how the superintendent search is going. Um, I guess what's the next steps that you guys are on?
We're back in the first seven days and we're. I mean, second, there is an interview that's all I can.
I would say standards-based grading has come up in the discussion with respected candidates and they have varying degrees of experience and. That person be a big part of the overall implementation in the future as well.
John Robertson.
Hello. I'm maybe not being career suicide here, but I'll do it anyway. Um, I'm not here to speak about one specific issue. I am here to speak about something that was brought about by one specific issue and I feel that it is occasionally. Um, as a teacher who works hard here and tries, has been very hard to support TCC community schools. I'm very proud of TCC community schools. I think we all are. I don't envy the position you guys are in. You have two competing factors sometimes. You have to keep all of the parents and everyone happy, you have to keep your staff happy. I'm aware of that is one thing to do. At the same time, I feel like um, the communication between what goes on, the choices and leadership of the board is not always communicated to the staff effectively. Uh, I feel like my motivation ability tells me what their choices are and why they do. And I think that maybe it would be better sometimes to get a little more of what's rational. Uh, I'd like to remind everyone that, you know, I know everyone here has a scapegoat with Mr. Reviller sometimes. He's not always everyone's favorite person. Uh, he and I have disagreed many times. But we, he's also listens to me when I have a problem sometimes too. I want to remind everyone in the room that once you leave, you're no longer gonna have that scapegoat. Uh, so we all are gonna be have to be responsible for our own choices. Uh, so please, as you're looking for your new superintendent, as you're making large decisions for the school corporation. And again, this is not just about one specific high school issue. This is about anything that is broadest moving for the whole school. Please consider your whole staff. Consider how it's gonna affect everyone and realize that, you know. Yes, we got raises, they're they were nice raises, I appreciate the raise, but you know, we are still. Barely competing with surrounding schools. And if you want to keep and earn new teachers coming out of college, which is difficult, there's not that many. We need to do something to make sure they feel good, which is make sure that they feel like they're supported. Thank you. I apologize to you, John. You're like you're in climate that is supportive, welcome to go. Some days. Depending on the issue and it depends on the day, yes. That's all right. Most days, I feel pretty good about it. In my high school administration, I go talk a big about anything, it tells you. Right or wrong, the agrees or disagrees, that's fine. And it's not just me. I think I'm speaking for other members of the staff that maybe just want to be quiet and lay low, but. Sweetie Willie agrees sometime, I'm gonna have to sweetie now, it's fine, so that's all I'm here for.
Yeah, we just say again in the superintendent interviews, how they. Belate and all, building accountable and the communication is is part of the discussion as well. We we agree with the importance.
I would like to say in response to him, uh, you know, the board is here to take action on. Financial issues, make policies. So what happens in those buildings? And what happens amongst the staff that's outside of what we take care of here? Um, I wanna I wanna apologize for that. I mean, I'm sorry that you guys feel that way, that you're not supported, but we are constantly looking at how we can support you.
Sure.
Um, we want to make sure that you guys know that you are appreciated. I don't know how to go about that. I don't know what to do from this point on, but it's going to get better. I can promise you that because we are gonna make sure it gets better.
I want to be clear, I'm not unhappy with my job.
No, I'm happy.
If I was unhappy, I would have left, all right? I mean, I've already been offered two, three other jobs. And I stayed because the foundation supported me.
Right.
Honestly, if it wasn't for the foundation, I would have left a year ago.
We we know, we know.
Okay, I'm I'm not trying to be vain.
But you are valued, you are appreciated, we want you here. And we are working. You guys don't see that, but we are working, I promise.
I just think a little like. You guys, I mean, I heard you say tonight, you know, we want as much information as possible on this, keep us informed all the time.
Yeah.
I'm not asking you all to email me personally and say, hey, John, here's what we're doing. But maybe a, here's why we made this choice specifically. That would scrub some of the rumors that are going around to kind of make teachers question what's going on.
We we maybe best. Maybe an email from the board would help just to the staff to let you know that we're we're concerned about this issue too.
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Joe Aylerz.
Yes.
Thank you. Man. That's it.
They're a full sheet.
Oh, boy.
I was in a full of blood.
I would make. I'm making an exception.
I know, I mean, I have to tell you.
I wouldn't realize, I'm sorry.
Matt Hayler.
Yes, sir, thank you. So uh. A couple of questions and and I'm gonna probably hit some areas that when I turn around, I look like a porcupine. My son, my high school. by some of my high school teacher friends, but I have a couple of things, as we look at the possibility of having to react like some of the corporations have, and we talk about e-learning. I would like to know, as a parent of elementary kids, how do we base e-learning? And I'm not saying this, I don't want any of the high school teachers to feel like I'm asking you, I asked a, a high school kid that I know, how does e-learning look for you? And correct me if I'm wrong, but in a block four schedule, one day of classroom is supposed to equal two days of material, correct? So, while I'm sitting with my first grader, third grader, and fifth grader for hours, doing all their e-learning, the high school student tells me, her one A P class, she was told to study for her test, and the other A P class said, check in via email. That's frustrating, because if any of the kids can actually manage on their own, it should be the high school kids, not the first graders trying to log in on their iPad or whatever. Um, second, if we're going to keep the block forward and we're gonna stick to it, and I've had to talk to John, we, we, well, I've argued with everybody, it's okay. But, like, what happens now that we have declining enrollment, right? We keep, now, at first, when the foundation report came out, we kept saying, well, those aren't good numbers, that's not accurate, that's got good information. Now, that's all we talked about, was, well, we knew this decline's gonna keep coming to the foundation report. Foundation report also offered solutions of things that might help us going forward, and I feel like we're not completely taking advantage of all those solutions. I talked to the high school principal of Tricentral, they would like to work for us, with us. If we current, I get, I get what Kim's saying, and I respect him, and I know she teaches to the nth degree and probably has the biggest spreadsheet you've ever seen coming, but.
You're not scared.
But, like, right now, what happens in a high school teacher, they teach three classes, right? What happens if there's not enough kids in the class, what does that teacher do then? Are they just teaching two classes for nine weeks? Because, what John's right, we have hard decisions that are gonna be coming financially to overcome, and it's gonna take the whole broad picture perspective. And I just think we need to be open to look at the whole picture, and I'll kind of touch on the graduation thing, because I do have some feelings about that. I get exactly where Mrs. Satom is coming from, it's not the kids' fault to be punished by the parents' lack of responsibility. I would ask, how many of the preschool kids are paid for their preschool, how much funding have you received for preschool? Are we gonna back charge those kids when they get into high school? You know, if they haven't paid for a lick of preschool that we provided, are we gonna then turn around in high school and say, you can't want now that you're a senior? I don't think anybody's said that, so I don't know how, if you, if you think I'm looking at it in an odd perspective, I would gladly listen. But I can't for the life of me think how we've had three years of preschool kids, that we haven't gotten collected any funding from. And then we had these kids that have worked in high school to be able to graduate. If, you know, if they're passing all their classes, they went all four years, some of these kids' parents are just, I'll think of a better word at some other point. But it, it, it shouldn't be held against them, because a lot of these kids struggle anyway in life, so, that's all.
Can I address in time with the best in that, uh, government? Go ahead, I, no, I'm asking the board, I, I.
Thirty, thirty second.
Just like, just like every bad police officer does represent the, uh, staff, I can guarantee you that my students are doing far more on the learning day than my daughter does, building a fort, saying this is social stuff. But I'm not here to argue with the elementary staff and say that I don't think it's good, I'm just saying, maybe your daughter has a couple of teachers that need to talk to in the judgment, and I don't think that's ever been the legal staff. And I think that was insulting, thank you. Thank you.
It's all good.
Is there a motion to adjourn? Seven. Second. Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.